Okay, I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Farmington School Board. We have a fairly straightforward agenda. I just need a...our first item is just to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Simmons, second by Carrero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're here this evening to discuss next steps for filling the vacancy of Member Saucer, who's term ended about 10 minutes ago, at the end of the business, the regular business meeting here on April 25th. A couple items, there's, all the board members have received a packet of the 12 applications that we received for this vacancy or this appointment. All of the applications have been de-identified so that we could review them, independent of any other biases or judgment to the degree possible. And I think what, I'm trying to think, like, what's the kind of right way to go forward here? But I know that each of us have had a chance to review the applications and probably have taken some time to rank or otherwise. I think one thing I'd like to do is just, you know, in the, in the interest of transparency, is just if we can each spend a minute, I don't know if that's possible for you, Jaclyn, but just if you want to describe kind of what you were looking for and then see the applications, and then we can, you know, I think our goal was to wino down to up to five finalists to conduct interviews with next, Monday at 5:30 PM. Another thing I'd like to accomplish is that we have a conversation about what the questions look like for that, that interview. And then, Member Carrero had asked me a couple days ago what the role of the student board members would be. So there's a kind of some administrative, like, what are the next steps look like that I think we want to get through? And then, if we want to have a discussion about specific candidates, or just present our top pick and just move forward from there. That's actually fairly simple. But again, I want to make sure that there's plenty of opportunity for y'all to communicate, you know, kind of what you went through and, and how we landed where we landed. So that's open for...
I think you should start by letting know that Board Member Doyle may not be speaking too much tonight.
Thank you. So, that's actually a great point. I'll give a little preamble here. Reason we did this, this way, state law prohibits the school board from moving forward with the formal process of filling a school board, a vacant school board member, until the member creating the vacancy has officially left the school board. Member Saucer's resignation letter indicates that her term or her resignation is effective at the end of the business meeting on April 25th. We adjourned that meeting 10 minutes ago, and so we're moving in, in forward. Member Coil has, Doyle, sorry, has been able to join us. If she had not been able to, we wouldn't have had Quorum to actually conduct this meeting. In order for a school board to conduct any business, we have to have four members out of the six seats present. Member Coletta has not been able to return yet from her trip to Houston for the robotics championship. I think she's on the road right now. And so, thank you, Member Doyle, for making yourself available. But she won't be speaking a lot. She had oral surgery, if I can share that bit of information. Too late, I already did. Thanks. Anyway, does that make sense? You know, we've kind of set the context for why we're here, how we're here, and when, you know, three of us will be doing more speaking than, than all four. Does that make, like, does that role of the school, student, yeah, role of the student school board members, questions to be asked at the interview, discussion of how we got to our top picks, does that seem like a good, does anyone, would you add anything to that or change anything to that?
Okay.
Okay. Let's, let's start at the top. The role of student, role of the student school board members. So part of this process, I made a series of recommendations. The board accepted them at the work session last or two weeks ago. But one thing that just wasn't part of the conversation was, should the student school board members, you know, participate in the interview process? It's not an intentional oversight or anything like that. Member Carrero mentioned it to me the other day. I fully support that they should, you know, be participants in the interview process. I think they will have the opportunity to ask questions, and I would certainly appreciate their input. They're not voting members, but I, they're, they're more than just figureheads. So, so we have consensus that the student school board members will be invited to participate in the interview process on Monday next week. Okay. Next item, do you want to talk about questions first, or should we talk about kind of how we got to our top picks?
We could talk about questions.
Okay, let's talk about questions.
Go ahead.
I think that's going to be a lengthier conversation.
The questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But I'm fine with however you guys want to go ahead and do it.
You're probably right. Let's talk about how we got to the candidates. That's actually my order. So Hannah, do you want to lead us off?
Sure. So I'll start by saying that we had 12 applicants for the vacancy, and I was really impressed with the, the applications that were submitted. It's really wonderful to see so many people who want to volunteer their time and their energy to participating on the board, especially because we're coming off of not a really easy year, so to speak. And it's, it's just really encouraging to see people who are motivated by that and want to be a part of, you know, finding solutions and addressing concerns and lifting up our district in a positive way. So, thanks to all of the applicants. The way at which I approached reviewing the applications was to establish some criteria that I was looking for, and then could, could identify kind of strengths within each, each application. And then based on those, review and rank applicants based on those who had more of the strengths. So, some of the criteria that I was looking for, or that I reviewed with the, the mindset of, was an understanding of what the school board's role is and what the, how we partner with the administration. So, another one was the depth at which their application demonstrated their preparation and research for the, for the position. As, as we know, there's a lot of time that happens outside of our meetings, that we have to review board packets, formulate questions, do a lot of that, and not just kind of show up and wing it. And so I thought that that was an important piece of information that kind of helped me see what an applicant, an applicant's approach to that type of, that type of preparation. The next one that I really looked for was, as, as it relates to if they had any unique experience or perspective that they might be able to bring to the board that was, that they called out in their application. Again, I think our strengths really come from having diver, diverse backgrounds. We have kids of different ages. We come from different professions. So really looking for someone who could add to the team in another way, with a perspective that we don't already have. And finally, really kind of connecting to their motivation for being involved. So, a few of the applicants called out specific things that demonstrated that they'd been tracking school board issues for quite a while, and not just necessarily kind of hot button issues. And I, and I thought that that was a strength of a few applications, too. So, that's the criteria that I used kind of when I was reviewing and identifying strengths in, in some of these.
I will say, Hannah, I pretty much did the exact same thing. What I did is, five questions were asked of each candidate, and I went through and kind of did a scale of one through three, one being the lowest, three being the highest, on how they answered the questions. And it was interesting how it came out. And again, we don't know who any of these candidates are. And like Hannah said, I do appreciate everybody that applied because this is, it's a tough role to have. It's not, it's not a glorified being on the school board. It's not a glorified role. But I appreciate that we had that many candidates. I was happily surprised on that. So I kind of weighed, I tried to weigh them equally, but some of them, what I really liked is, you know, like question number two, identify the biggest challenges facing. I wanted to see what they were and what the solution was as well. So twofold on that. So I answered a little bit further. So that's how I, I came up, really with top, my top three. I know our maximum of five candidates would decide how many we were going to interview tonight, but I came up with my top three. If we went further, I could share that as well.
Jaclyn, do you want to speak, or are you good?
I can say a couple quick things. It's, basically similar to what Hannah and Steve said. Just kind of looking at what their overall goals were, what they kind of said that they could offer, and then looking at specifics and how I thought that they would fit with their current board, and working with admin. And same with Steve. I was really surprised, actually, that we got 12 people. It was awesome that we did. Because we did have a number of people over the past year tell us that they could do this job probably better than us. So, no. So it is good. I'm glad that we do have options, right? Because that's, that's good for our community, that we have people that are willing to step up, whether it's now or in November, when we have the election and have seats open. So yeah, just kind of the same thing, ranked what I saw.
Yeah. And similar, I came up with a little bit of a scale. I weighted two things more than others. One was, actually, similar to you. I asked, do they actually understand what the role of the school board is? And I, I gave some weight to that. The other element I gave more weight to was hands-on volunteering and, and work within the community. Those are two very important factors. And I think understanding this, you know, being involved and, you know, the, the time commitment and everything else, I just think, number one, it demonstrates that stepping out from behind, you know, a meeting or, or other types of activities, actually working with kids. I mean, as Member Saucer said, it's about, you know, what's good for the kids and what's good for the district. And I think there's no better way to understand what's good for kids than by working with kids. This is my experience, and I know that others have here, too. The other two things I kind of looked for specifically were more about, like, what are the challenges we're facing the district right now? And sort of whether they, you know, kind of the budget issues, and their interest and, and ability to kind of understand the budget issues, but also academic performance and, and the curriculum side of things. And then finally, there are sort of a couple of intangible items I checked off, and things like, like you said, are they probing questions? Are they, are they going to, you know, really be actively engaged in? If I can divine that from, from what we had to see, and then bring, bring solutions to the table, because it's, it's about bringing ideas to the table, not just pointing out the problem. So, those are how I, you know, how I rated things. And I, like you, I've got top, well, I've got top four, because I have a tie at three. But, but I could rate, I could give you the ranking from one to 12. But I don't think we need to get that far down to it. So thanks. I guess I wanted to make sure we had a chance to, to kind of share how we approached the process. I guess, do we want to, oh, I'll also add, maybe this is part of the conversation, too, but, you know, Member Coletta's not here, but she did email me her preference. I would like to enter that into the five, even though she's not able to be here. I don't know if anyone at the board has a, I'm not, I don't get to make the decision. So if anyone feels that we should just limit it to four now, we can, we can talk about that, but I just feel that that shouldn't...
Can we do that? I mean, if that, that's kind of outside the norm.
I think we can choose what we want to do.
I guess for me, we had 12 applicants, and I think that four is one-third of those applicants, and feels like a reasonable number to admit, or to interview, similar to how we would have approached other things professionally. Not to say that her recommendation could very well...
There's a good chance it overlaps.
...align with ours, right? But I think capping it to one-third of our applicants that are brought forward for interviews would make sense.
Okay. Want to cap it to four?
That's fine.
Okay. That's good consensus. We will cap it to four. Let's just go in order of what we talked. Do you want to identify your top candidate?
Sure.
Number, by number?
Just the one? Just our top and see where we land there, if there's any overview. I think that's a good approach.
Yeah.
Okay, so I identified candidate number three as my top candidate. This candidate stood out because they had experience on both our institutional review committee, as well as on our strategic emergent team. So seemed like a candidate that would be well-aligned with our strategic plan. Their application also noted understanding of the roles of the board, as well as some of the challenges that we're facing. And another strength of this applicant's, this candidate's application was, they noted, and really called out how our community is changing, and the importance of having diversity as part of our, our approach and our consideration. And I think regardless of any challenge that we're talking about or strength, diversity is reflected in that. And that's something that we don't, that I didn't see in other applications. So...
Sure.
You want to go?
I didn't necessarily rank from like top. I just did like five. I picked my five. So, but if you want to, if we're going to...
Do you want to advance who you would on record? Do you want Steve to go?
I can just give you the first one. I picked candidate three based on experience that they've had, not only in the district, but professionally, and then just based on their answers. I thought they would be a good fit.
My top candidate was number nine. Again, based on the answers that they provided, I liked the challenges and the answers to that and the volunteer.
Okay. And my top candidate was number, sorry, I just had it, number seven. And similarly, I think that candidate just hit all the answers. There are kind of like demonstrated depth of understanding the, the role of the board and the difference between the board and the administration. Had a lot of great volunteering and hands-on work with kids in her background, in the background. Was emphasizing on some of the budget and, and curricular challenges in the district. And yeah, I think the, the response has also demonstrated, you know, asking some questions and bringing some ideas to the table. So...
So we've identified three, nine, and seven. Did Rebecca's overlap with any of these, or was there's different?
No, she, she had a different. She had candidate number one.
Number one. Okay.
Who's also very strong.
Nine is also on my list, so there you go.
And candidate one is actually second place on mine. So... So, do we need any further discussion, or do we settle in on that?
Say we just settle in on that?
So two for... We'll go on a fourth candidate, then we could add Rebecca's in, then we'd have four candidates to interview on Monday. Because there is overlap here.
Unless anyone felt really strongly about their second ranking, or others that they'd want to put forward for consideration.
See, so...
And it was a close call for me on my top two.
And your, your...
Number, yeah, the number one candidate, or my, sorry, candidate number one was my second pick.
Your second, okay.
And again, real strong understanding of the knowledge, real strong understanding of the role of the board, and the differentiation between governance and management of the board. You know, things we're talking about as we develop, you know, we're talking about that a lot.
Number 11 was mine.
Huge development, huge involvement in some of the booster programs. And then again, focusing on kind of academic performance and budget. So for me, like, we hit very high on all the things that, again, I prioritize, but that's, I don't know where they fit on yours.
My third candidate was number two.
I also had number two.
I had two on my list as well.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of overlap on three and two. And then we have seven and nine as...
I'd say we roll with that.
That's four candidates.
Number two.
I mean, it's kind of interesting where we all fell. I mean, I think that's, so...
So three, nine, seven, and two?
Three, nine, seven, and two.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, now do you want to talk about questions, or do you want to reveal who they are?
I think it'd be, my thought is that it'd be good to extend the invitation to those that we've identified, and see if they are able to, if they still are interested in interview next week, so that they're hearing it from Lori and not...
Okay, use the other ones that apply, because...
Yes.
Right.
I think it's a good idea, Hannah.
Okay. I'm good with that.
So then questions?
So, anyone who's waiting to find out who's who will have to wait a little bit longer. That's okay. We'll reach out tomorrow and extend those invitations.
Yeah, we'll be waiting to find out who's who, too, won't we?
We will.
Yeah, that's good.
All right. So on to questions that will be asked in the interview. I've got a few that I thought about. Some of the ones that were in the application are good. I don't know if there's follow-ups to those questions. That seems to me like a good base to go from.
Yeah.
Do you want me to just start talking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I just had five questions that I thought were good. You know, what would be your priorities as a school board member? What issues do you believe need to be addressed in academic programs and offerings? And what would you recommend? Thoughts on communications, community engagement, and transparency. Some of the applications noted that as opportunities for improvement, both for the board and the district. So I, that's just sort of a brainstorm there. And then, you know, thoughts on balancing the competing priorities of so many stakeholders? That's a huge challenge for our administrative team, and I think it is for us as well. And then finally, you know, how do you approach putting your own personal biases aside, thinking about the greater good of the district? That's been a huge moment of growth for myself. So I think it's a good question to ask as part of an interview.
I really like that question. I wondered if Lori maybe had examples from past interviews of the questions that were asked in previous interviews of school board candidates.
I do have some. I don't have the...
Okay. And if we had kind of a sense for how many questions, how long of the interview, maybe kind of starting there, 30 minutes, is that...
Do we have a time set for...
Six o'clock.
Start at 5:30?
5:30.
We're starting at 5:30.
And then...
Yeah. And I, again, I, again, I'm just assuming that an interview would last about...
Better change my calendar.
Okay.
So, we can talk about the process of that, too. I have an idea, but...
That kind of gives us an idea of how many questions we can fit in.
I would be interested in keeping, like, the first question, as far as what they see their role is and the role of the board, because I think that will give us an opportunity at the same time, too. If, you know, to get on the same page and educate people as far as what, what is our role and what we do, because I think for a lot of people, myself included, when I got on the board, had a misconception about what, what we actually do. So...
I have, go ahead, Jason.
No, sorry.
Don't lose it.
No, it won't.
Okay. One of the questions that I had brainstormed was, what are, what are three words that someone would use to describe you? And what are the three words that you would use to describe yourself? I think that is a question that I found helpful in interview settings, to lend itself to kind of self-awareness, and what you perceive others to be your strengths or your attributes, as well as what you perceive those to be. And the other question that I had was related to any concerns that they have about starting with, you know, six months left in a term. And, you know, this is not a well-formulated question, but getting at what are their concerns as they onboard, and, you know, what would be most helpful to them in terms of if, if selected or appointed, how to, what their learning style is, and how to, how to best help get them up to speed.
I like that question specifically, because it kind of, it's an open-ended question, because I would kind of want to know specifically, like, how are you going to get engaged to get caught up on that? I mean, you can't just listen to meetings. You engage in the community, I mean, opens, ask other questions. Right? I like that, Hannah.
Yeah, and I think the, the challenge with that, too, is, you know, when we all, when we all started, it was January, and MSBA has all kinds of training for us to attend, and that won't be a resource that's probably available to them. I don't think there's a training or, I'm not sure if there's recordings from MSBA on, you know, the first two, what is it, three days of sessions, or two?
Yeah. I think they do have...
So that's, there could be some self, some self-teaching and whatnot.
Jason, what were you going to say?
I know you guys were talking about questions, and Lori and I have been talking about kind of a schedule, and we're, I don't know how much time you were thinking for each interview?
I was thinking 30 minutes.
Okay, we were thinking 25, or 30, about a five-minute space in between, and go through...
Or line, yeah.
Something like that, because we know that, you know, you want to give that fourth person, you want to be fresh for that fourth person, as you are with the first person. It gets a little bit tough. And then...
I was thinking if we do, if we're doing it at the, at the district office, that we're in the, that the candidates can wait in the conference room across the hall.
Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, because even though it's open, I don't think we'd want the candidates that, you know, two, three, and four sitting in there, just that...
Correct.
And I think, the other thing I think about, too, is depending on what you do, and when you figure questions, you could give the questions to people ahead of time. We've done that before, so they can think about them, or you can drop them on them. So that's something to think about. I did have one other thing, then I forgot, so...
You said you weren't gonna...
Well, I got the big one. I didn't forget the big one, then I was talking as I forgot more. So...
I have found it helpful when either one interviewing, or one interviewing others, that one candidate's arrived to be able to provide them a written copy of what the questions are, so they do have a few minutes to think. As well as for visual processing people, it's helpful to have something that you can bring in and read the question, too.
That's what I, I was going to say. I think if you're thinking 25 to 30 minutes, right, maybe five to eight questions, depending on what you do.
Maybe a little bit of follow-up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's conversational.
So are we saying provide the questions ahead of time?
The core.
I was thinking when they arrive or check in, that, yeah, then they get them there.
I like cold turkey, because to answer your question, how would you describe yourself in three words? I would rather hear it from you from the heart right away than have you think about it.
They're probably watching.
Exactly.
Anybody who's paying close attention.
It could be a question.
Yeah.
You could, you could change it to use three foods to describe you or something.
Follow-up question on the fly, Steve.
What were the questions we asked at the school board meeting?
Yeah.
I don't like, I, I like, if I'm interviewing somebody, even at work, I, we have our standard questions, but it's to get to know you.
Chair Christensen, board members, I'm wondering, what are your thoughts about possibly sending your questions to me? I can consolidate those, and then you can take a peek at them and select the top five, or I think five or six questions. It's probably the most you'd want to...
It's hard, this is the only forum we can have that conversation. It becomes a, or we can have possible questions you may ask, and then it's, it's there, and then we can...
Didn't we just kind of decide? I mean, we just talked, I think, six questions?
No, we've got five here for you.
Can you review them for us?
Well, unless you like all of that I said, but, so I put around, what would your priorities be as a school member, school board member? Three words others would use to describe you, and what are three words you use to describe yourself? Concerns about starting with six months remaining in the term, and how you get engaged and caught up quickly? Putting your personal biases aside, thinking of the greater good, you know, how you would approach putting your own biases aside and thinking about the greater good of the district? Then the other four that I have up here, too, is, what issues do you believe need to be addressed in academic programs and offerings? What changes would you recommend? Maybe, maybe the more appropriate question is, how would you go about recommending changes?
I guess I would like to see a compiled list, just for me. And then, I don't know why that couldn't be sent out to everyone, and then we could send you...
There will have to be a list of possible questions.
We could send you like, definitely like this.
Yeah, we can reply, all, but we can...
Yeah, we would just send them to Kyle.
Or back to Lori.
Okay.
Hope there's additions or changes.
Okay. So these are ones, and then if you want to recommend others...
The starting list, yeah.
Yeah, starting list, and then we'll do that.
We want to cap at six?
Six to eight, I think, depends on what it is. And just another thing to think about, I mean, we, when we did our professional development with MSBA, a lot of that was scenario-based. So, I mean, you might maybe want to end with a question that's a scenario that you have to deal with, and just see, you know, how people may interact with that situation. You guys have had plenty of things to think about, and, and we all know that you get put in tough situations. So just another thing to think about, that's not a rote question that you can look up, but... not a rote question that you can look up, but how are you going to react to this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then is there any evaluation mechanism that we have for interviews or a scoring rubric based on?
I would be open to hearing that. I mean, I guess, you know, what I want to get, sorry, what I, it's not what I want. It's what I would recommend we get to is after the interviews, we narrow it down to two or max three that we vote on on May 9th. Because we're gonna, you're gonna walk away and have different thoughts on it after we're done with the interviews. But we can probably have a conversation after the interviews are done and say, let's focus in on these two or three, and then we'll come back on May 9th and have the vote. I'm open to suggestions on a different process, though.
I like having a discussion at the end of that about the candidates and how we feel they felt. Cause I, again, value everybody's opinion. And I remember we interviewed, you know, superintendent or ath, athletic director, whatever. It was, it's interesting to hear the other people's perspective or something I missed on that. So I think a good conversation afterwards. And then to your point, bring it to the, you know, do we bring it recommending two or recommending one, depending on how we come out of that meeting, I guess, at the end?
Yeah, I would hope that we would cut that in half from four to two.
I'm good with that.
I guess the, uh, kind of circling back to if we want to talk more about a process or how we, um, might approach the interviews. Similarly, once we know who the candidates are and meet them, some of us might have relationships. We might already know them. So having an idea going in of how we, um, you know, plan to evaluate their responses more objectively can also help us reduce our own biases that we may have towards particular candidates.
When we did the superintendent interviews, we all had copies of the questions for each candidate. And we each took a turn just asking the question, and we all took notes throughout. And then that's kind of what we based our conversation off of. I mean, and if there's prior relationships with candidates, I'm sure that, well, that will be part of the discussion. And people want to bow out their opinion, understandably so. But I don't see that being an issue, I guess. It's helpful.
So we'll come down to, we'll come down to us to questions in sort of a set order they're asked and who asks. So I'll ask the same question.
We have to ask them all the same questions.
Right, but I would ask the same question every time. You would ask the same question every time, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you happen to have a follow-up, Jason, people can chime in. Yeah.
Okay. I like it.
And then does Jason have a role, um, as part of the interviews besides being present? No? He's saying no. Okay.
I don't agree with you guys.
Well, I mean, we, we take a teams-based approach to interviewing where the people who are, it's a really important partnership. So I would, I would value your thoughts. Um, similar to the school board members is, it's not a vote, but I certainly think that having-
An ex officio member, if I remember the formal way.
Have to be able to work with a superintendent effectively as part of this role.
Absolutely.
We did say that the, um, student school board members were going to be part of the process and that we would, I think, going to have input on questions? Or are we just gonna have to watch?
Tougher to get them involved in that, but.
I would, I don't think they should be including questions, but I think they could do follow-up. But I would like their input at the end of-
I think it might be nice to ask them, what questions would you ask a potential school board member? Because they could have a really different view and, um, at least open it up to if they said, you know, they might say, yeah, I'd really want to know this about us, about a potential school board member. At least put it in the, the pile of list for consideration as, as part of our other review. Um, and then also considering if we'd like to have them, um, pose a question to, as part of it, or if they're just listening, something to talk about.
I like that. I, I, I think it may be neat for Kyle to reach out to them, to your point, your two specific questions, say, hey, I'm going to give you an opportunity. You have a specific question that you would, you would want to ask a candidate like this and have you evaluate that. And that will be their question going into. I, I kind of like that. That's a good idea, Hannah. Something different.
Yeah, I think they have a, a completely different perspective than any of us coming at it. And so they could certainly have some good ideas about what, what they would really want to know about a potential school board member.
Cause we say all the time how much we value their opinion and this and that, and then we, we don't get them included in it. That would-
Right.
Absolutely. That's a good idea. Like it.
Yeah. Yeah, not just having, um, you know, I think this extends too to our approach broadly around engaging the community is moving beyond having people at the table to how do they influence our decision-making? And how do we, you know, how do we actually incorporate their voice?
Good. Um, so we've covered all the items I had in sort of my list of items for this agenda. We've identified four candidates. We've talked about a process for questions, roles for superintendent and student school board members in the interview process.
I guess the only thing I would ask then with the student school board people would be to, once they give us their input on stuff, I think once we start that open conversation, I think we'd have to have them removed.
I think the whole thing is open to the public since we have a quorum.
It is, okay.
Yeah, we have everything, our discussion.
So we're recording it?
Well, we might, yeah, no, we don't really have the ability to at the end. I don't know if you want to do an audio recording like you in the old, in the old days, but.
It's necessary.
But it's not necessary. We don't have, it ends up being another special meeting. We're, we're recording this because we're here and we can.
And is that different? I mean, Kyle and I talked about this, about, um, the requirements around having a quorum, because some of the school boards, when they've had a similar position, did not have a quorum interview. They had, you know, a couple so that they could conduct and, and talk about. Was that similar to the process for the superintendent, Jaclyn? Was there just-
Were all present for-
Yeah, but we'll have a quorum. We can, we can do it.
But I mean, the similar, the same thing would have applied, right? That the discussions that they had about the potential candidates would have been open to the public if they were conducting business?
It was COVID times. I'm trying, it was all via Zoom. We did record them.
It was virtual. There was virtual parts of it. And so I think they recorded it and they were available for a while.
The interviews and the discussion about candidates?
For a while. I don't know if this is a topic we can go to closed session about, and I don't know that it makes sense to get down to a final.
Right. Just clarifying for-
Yeah, I, I didn't understand it first, but I do appreciate how awkward that might get to be, right?
Right.
But, yeah.
Chair Christiansen?
Yes?
Might I recommend that we, uh, contact MSBA, MSBA and see what their recommendation is as far as recording? Um, I'm not real comfortable recording an interview.
Yeah, I, I don't, it'll, it's a special meeting, so I, I will double-check, but I think we don't have, we don't need to.
No.
Um, but, anyway.
So then if it comes, it's up to you, then you just decide if we, I'm fine without having it.
But-
Not having it recorded.
Okay.
I don't know how to video shoot.
It's open to the public. It is open to the public. And that's, that's the minimum requirement.
And we really do not have the ability to video record it because we're going to be at, at, in 1201, at, at FES and stuff. And, and we could get the other stuff out, but I think the way it's going to be set up and stuff, it, it's, it's not going to be great, but.
Chair Christiansen, board members, um, if you had a fifth, no, no, no. If you had a fifth candidate, who would you select? I, I thought I heard, um, number one?
I would select candidate number one as the fifth candidate.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I can answer that offhand, so.
That's what, I mean, based on what I wrote down.
Should someone?
Um, I would recommend that we do five.
Why is that, Lori?
Just, um, because we, so that we have a diverse set of candidates. So.
I guess, can you expand on that? Why having four versus five?
So that we're not all female or all male.
Lori knows, she saw, like, she's the one that redacted all the information, so.
Oh.
But I think there was a point to having it redacted, was that we were making decisions that were influenced by that.
But I can see her point that I'm afraid if we get there and it's all, you know what I mean? If people don't feel like it's a diverse group, but.
We started out saying-
I'm good with whatever.
I appreciate, we started out saying we were going to have, and I'm, I'm not making an argument for against. I'm, I'm happy with whatever we decide as a board, or even going, staying up to what we're at. But, you know, we were going to have five candidates based on one for each sitting board member at the time. That was the original kind of thinking about it. It's only changed because Rebecca's not here, right? That's the only thing, the reason we, that we landed in that spot. Um, but I'm open for changes. That's, I, I don't want to be seen as coloring or, uh, coloring the process.
Well, we did it all anonymously, so I guess it's-
Yeah, this makes me kind of uncomfortable that we had a decision made and we're all agreed, you know, 25 minutes ago. And now, um, and now we're kind of changing that without.
At our previous board mem, board meeting, we talked about five candidates.
Five, we did.
We did, but this group came to a consensus 25 minutes ago. And now, and I didn't hear that issue raised by any of our board members either. So I, I appreciate and acknowledge that. But this, that does make me uncomfortable because we had it blinded for a reason so that we didn't know-
Okay.
-genders or backgrounds. And so, um, you know, Lori is privy to that information, and that's why it makes me less comfortable about now changing it. Um, if others, if others have a different view, I'd love, I mean, I welcome hearing your perspectives, but that's just how I'm feeling right now.
I have the same perspective. I, yeah. We made that decision.
Okay.
And we'll stick, I mean, I'll-
Fine, keep them four. That's fine.
Yep, we'll keep it at four. Thank you, Lori. We appreciate, we do appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we have any other items to discuss? We've got a process for questions. We've got, Lori, you're going to reach out to the-
Correct.
Those four candidates tomorrow.
Email questions, do you?
You guys will email questions to me, or I'll send you an initial start of the list. You can add to it. So I've got some to-dos.